2025 Board President Chris Norwood, welcome to the meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph and Brown Act for open meetings. Tune into our hybrid style meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube or in person boardroom here at Randall World Languages School. Public comments can be made if you're logged on to Zoom or if you're in person, YouTube, however, is a listen only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written public comment. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. We opened the board meeting earlier at six o'clock with all of the trustees here on time, and now we're going to do the roll call for our student board reps.
Okay, Milpitas Middle College High School Student Board Rep Upday? You just pushed that, yeah.
Yeah.
Milpitas High School Student Board Rep Chong?
Here.
And then our Calaveras Hills High School Student Board Rep Rocha emailed me and had a, is not going to be here this evening.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you, Scott. In closed session, there were no items taken. There were no actions taken. Motion to review and approve the open session agenda?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Naka, second by trustee, no, all those in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, motion carries. The open session agenda is now approved. Time for the flag salute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Cadet Petty Officer Third Class Sanoi. I'm joined by Cadets Chand, Perez, and Lieutenant Commander Palawal. May you all rise from your seats. Please remove any covers and put your right hands over your hearts. Ready, begin.
Let's fly.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Just so that everyone understands, we have flags here, and then we also have a flag at the top, right behind you. Tid on the agenda, MUSD strategic goals, starting with our board, our student board reps.
Build a culture of we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication systems for better outreach to students, parents, and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply the passion and learning for their future careers.
Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and economic gains.
Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments.
Thank you, trustees and student board rep trustees. Item 11 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Norwood. So tonight, I would like to point out that for our, there you go, that for our average daily attendance goal of ninety-seven percent, we are there overall. We were there in August and currently, three fifths of the way or four fifths of the way through September, we are at ninety-seven point two percent to date. And if you take a look at all of our schools year-to-date column, none of them are below ninety-six percent. So we're doing an excellent job, MUSD teachers, staff, support team, students, and families. Let's keep it up.
Just as a quick reminder, ninety-seven percent attendance is a goal, and the reason why that's a goal is that when we know that when our children are at school, the, the, the job that the teachers want to do in educating them, they have the full opportunity to do that. So Superintendent Jordan said that we are appreciative of the entire ecosystem that supports our attendance goals for the district.
Thank you. I also would like to share that Governor Newsom, on Saturday, signed into law AB forty-nine and SB ninety-eight, which impacts school campuses by protection from immigrant enforcement. So putting in place in California that it is prohibitive of school employees to allow officers to any non-public area of the office or school. Also, that it requires that any officer, in order to gain any sort of information on a student, must have a judicial warrant. It also prevents staff, to the greatest extent possible, from sharing any information about a student without that student's parent or guardian's permission. And also, it requires that if there's a rumor that ICE is on campus, that we must confirm, and if it is confirmed that immigration has been or is on campus, we are to immediately notify parents, guardians, and also all school staff. I'd also like to point out, for strategic commitment number one, build a culture of we, that we are in the midst of Rosh Hashanah, which is the Jewish New Year. So Shana Tova, sweetness and joy in the new year to all of you who celebrate. And tomorrow, our Black Excellence Collective is hosting Shades of Success at the MUSD Innovation Campus. All are welcome, and that is from five thirty to seven. There will be a resource fair, as well as opportunity to enjoy each other's company with food and games. And then I would also like to point out that on Friday, the board and community celebrated the inaugural, I don't want to say burial, but that's what comes to mind, the inaugural installment of the MUSD twenty-five-year perpetual time capsule, which includes from every single one of our schools, our departments, and including our city officials, our police, fire, and also the mayor. That includes artifacts that represent who we are today and that we expect will speak to those who are here in our stead within twenty-five years. And then every twenty-five years, the leaders and MUSD community has, they have the call to carry forward by examining what the generation before them wanted to say to them about building our culture of we and our five strategic commitments, and then put in their message to the next generation. So I look forward to coming here in 2050 to see what the next generation has to put in the capsule. That concludes this part of my report. And now for the recognitions. If I could have the board and our executive cabinet join me. I first would like to recognize our Parent Teacher Association of Senate Elementary School. We all know, or maybe we don't all know, but the Parent Teacher Association is a key partner in what it is that we can do to provide opportunities for our learners, particularly when we're looking at strategic commitment number three, building pathways, and also strategic commitment number four, assuring that our learners have everything possible for academic and social emotional success, and strategic commitment number five, finding resources creatively and in partnership with others. So a big thank you to our Senate Elementary School PTA for sponsoring over forty of our learners at Senate Elementary School this summer in the American Computer Science League. So if we could have our PTA representatives come up, please. Now, would you please share a bit about the American Computer Science League?
Hi, everyone. So the American Computer Science League has been conducting contests for more than forty-eight years now. And these, they conduct contests for every year for grades, grades three to twelve. And these contests test students on, they help students learn some basic computer science concepts, as well as coding, and they are multiple levels. And we have been very thankful to be able to host this at Senate for two years now. And we'll be having more students participate than this year as well. And I'd like to thank MUSD for recognizing our PTA. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And now if I could have the team help me in having our students come up to receive their certificates. And while you're doing that, I would like to first point out that at the state level, we had grade four Senate Team One first place for the elementary three division in the state of California. Way to go. And we had a number of students who also had final results with Adve, reaching the gold award for elementary division. Aditya, the silver award, Gargi, silver award, Myra, silver award, Arshun, bronze award, Hamad, bronze award, and Samar, bronze award. And now we'll call your names so you can come and get your certificates. Arjun?
He's in there.
Do you want to, and then to me and I can say their names?
Sure.
Maya?
Trying to pull them in.
Gargi? Adve? Samar? Hamad? Myra? Adya? Dev? Harish? Manvi?
This is really nice paper.
Pahal? Rayon? Sanchi? Samved? And Yusha? All right. And Nitya, would you mind giving these to all of them? Thank you. A big round of applause, and all of our families up for a picture? Okay.
Yes, I.
So every year, students across the country take the SAT, Scholastic Aptitude Test. This is a test that is designed to give an insight into a student's aptitude for success in college and beyond. And this year, we had four of our students recognized for Merit Scholarship semifinalist. So collectively, with the other six thousand or so out of the country, so that's pretty good, they have the opportunity to compete for twenty-five million dollars worth of scholarships. So I'd like to invite Charles B., Dylan Nguyen, Natalie Chin, and Justin Shin. And also Principal and Chief Innovator Wollman. All right, and I would like to share with you a bit, you can read all their bios when you receive our school life this week. I think it comes out tomorrow. Charles, when asked what is his favorite subject in school, he said physics and math because I believe they pertain to the most of the world around me. They're two very broad fields of study that appear in so many other different areas, and that means the knowledge I've gained in those subjects will carry me very far. And Justin, when asked what does being named a National Merit Scholar semifinalist mean to you, he said, I think being named a National Merit Scholar semifinalist is a great honor because it is a reflection of all the hard work I've put in throughout my years in high school. It feels rewarding to see my achievement be recognized at a national level, but I know that I still have a lot more to improve in. And Dylan, what or who motivates you to succeed at such a high level? My parents motivate me to succeed. They push me to improve every day, to learn, to succeed. I gained a work ethic that's been essential whenever I start to lose motivation. Great job. If we could have our parents and also Mr. Weber and any other of our team members from MHDs. Can you take that? Thank you. All right. I noticed, sitting over there with our Willer team, that we have three Js, a D, and a E. So I would like to invite Principal Elsie up, Ms. Deanna Elsie. And she is joined by Assistant Principal Julie Sharma. Let me come up here, right up here. And then we are honoring our science specialist, Julian Roque, and our reading specialist, Vida Antiveros. And I would venture to say that during the presentation, we'll be joined by the other J, Julie. Okay.
Sure, we'll make her.
All right. Would you like to say something about why the staff selected Vida?
Oh my gosh, there's so much to say about Vida. Weller, I feel like doesn't exist without Vida. She knows every student and all of their family members. She is the reason why so many students come to our school at seven thirty in the morning to read and get their days started in her classroom. She helps in our cafeteria, and at lunch, she helps keep everybody happy during lunchtime, which can sometimes be a chaotic time. And Vida brings the calm, and you just spread love everywhere. The staff learns so much from you every day by the love that you give and all the reading success we've had with our students you play a part in. So we just, we can't thank you enough. Yeah.
It's Vida's fault. She said it all.
No, she's amazing. Mr. Roque. Yes, our amazing, incredible science teacher, best dressed on campus, wears his lab coat every day. wears his lab coat every day and inspires so much creativity and innovation and interest in our students. You are a part of so many aspects of our day-to-day functioning. You lead clubs after school. He's our best emcee at our Halloween parade. That's just, right now, he's helping me lead our fat bear week. You just, you do it all and you do it with a smile on your face and you show such care and compassion for all the students while you bring this love of science to our campus. Thank you for your leadership and all that you do for staff, students, and all of the families. Amazing.
Oh, sure. I just want to say thank you to the whole Weller community. They are an amazing group. I love coming into work every single day, not only for the kids, but also the staff. And so Mrs. Elsie said it very well, that Weller is an amazing community. And so I'm very thankful to the whole Weller community, students, staff, parents, everyone. So thank you all.
I just wanted to say, I work with a wonderful group of individuals. And I've been through seven principals and been there a while. So my biggest joy is coming in and having students find out that I also tutored their parents. And, or they'll come in and say, oh, my mom knows you, or my dad knows you, or my grandma knows you. And so I get to feel like I'm the grandma, you know, and I love it. I love it. So I'm enjoying my job. I'm having way too much fun.
Thank you very much. And if we could have your families and also Julie and any other team members join us for a photo. And that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you Superintendent Jordan. We are always inspired by our recognition and our MUSD as it really exemplifies all the different talents that we have in the district and reinforces our culture of we. All right, at this time, Scott, are there any comments from the public?
We have no public comment at this time.
Awesome. Item 13 on the agenda, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Report.
Thank you. Tonight, we will begin with Principal Elsie, Assistant Principal Sharma, and our fantastic fourth grade teacher this year, fifth and sixth grade teacher, Ms. Julie.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited to present today about some of the work that we started last year and are continuing this year. Our staff decided last year to intentionally focus on outcomes for our multilingual learners. So that's what we wanted to share with you all today. The next, okay, perfect. So in partnership with our own school's leadership team, we also partner with an organization called Partners in School Innovation. And they have coached and helped us develop some of our systems and structures campus-wide that help us with our instructional practices to improve student outcomes and to close opportunity gaps that are current in our education system that affect students at Weller and beyond. So in working with them and telling them what our needs were after we identified and looked at data, they helped create a platform for us that houses a lot of our adult learning that we do at staff meetings and any professional development days that we have.
We started our work with them. And last year, so the points that you see in bold, we started that work last year with our staff. And the things that you see that are not in bold, that is our goal this year. So we will be working through those on the platform this year on our staff development. Student talk structures is front and center. We started with that already. And we're finding more ways to incorporate more talk structures in our daily school life.
And then for each of those modules, what they helped put together with us is opportunities for staff to engage in reading articles. There's resources, there's videos, there's reflection questions. There's a way for us to write comments to one another, share best practices, comment on each other's work, and it houses everything in one place, which is what's really nice. It's a one-stop shop to go back to. So if there was an incredible strategy that we talked about when it came to developing partnerships, for example, our staff knows that they can go back to our platform to have all of those resources. So before we move on to some of the videos that we have from our community, the next slide shows some of our data from last year. It's early in the year this year, but we will be continuing to collect data. This is our iReady data from last year focusing on our multilingual learners. So from diagnostic one to the fourth diagnostic that we took at the end of the year, we were able to achieve pretty great movement of students to more grade level proficiency in reading. I focused on reading data here. So we're super proud of those results and continuing to grow and build on those this school year as well.
Click one more time, maybe? Yeah. The student one, I think you need to click one more time. Maybe there's words that didn't show up. I don't know. Okay, there we go. So we have some stars over here, our Mustang students. We asked them, how does talking in the classroom help you learn? And they have some things to share. And then we have our wonderful Weller teachers who we asked, how has your instruction improved for all learners, especially multi-language learners, with the work that we have been doing with talk structures and building relationships? And then they would have some things that they would like to share. The pink part? Yeah.
How does talking in the classroom help you learn?
Well, it helps me collaborate with my classmates. Talking in the classroom can let each other tell each other what they are thinking and their thought processes. For example, if there was a project, talking could help share everyone's ideas in the group. But it also depends how you use talking. It could be something important during a group discussion.
Nikita from room 110. How talking help you from learning? If everybody gonna give a different, different answers? We can also answer that to the teacher. Also, we can answer our answer also.
Room 110. How you can, how you can learn from talking is like you can ask your friends for different answers and question to learn about stuff.
It helps me like getting, get better at each other and knowing each other. And it also helps me like writing down, write things down. And it also helps me by like if I read a book and talk it out, it helps me understand the book.
How has your instruction improved for all learners, especially MLLs, with the work we've been doing with talk structures and building relationships?
So the work we've been doing with talk structures has improved our instructions by giving students an avenue to share their answers in many different ways and even in many different languages. We vary the talk structures we use in class to give as many opportunities as possible and even formats as possible for students to share their thinking. Some strategies that we've used in our fifth and sixth grade classrooms are Brain Ball, Tea Party, and Jigsaw. Now, the work we've done with building relationships has allowed us to work collaboratively with our families and our students to set goals for those students.
My name is Courtney Alvarez. I teach second grade at Weller. And incorporating talk structures into our everyday practice in my classroom has really improved my instruction because it's allowed for students of all backgrounds, but particularly my multi-language learners, to have a low-pressure but structured opportunity to interact and talk with their peers about academic content, but also about themselves. So that's been a really cool opportunity for me to hear, but also learn about them from their conversations with each other.
My instruction has improved through the use of talk structures, relationship building, and cooperative learning strategies. We, on my team, have intentionally incorporated Think Pair Share and other structures that help students have talk with their classmates using academic language and sentence frames, and it incorporates movement as well. We've also incorporated morning meetings so that our fifth and sixth graders are used to talking with one another. And they've started to develop a really wonderful classroom culture where kids are willing to share with one another and take some risks in class.
As both a parent and teacher, I've seen firsthand how talk structures have made a huge difference. My own daughter, who is reserved in front of people, now loves participating in show and tell, which has boosted her confidence in a huge way. In my classroom, I've seen a similar transformation, especially with my multilingual learners, the trust we've built around them to make more risks. Now, during our class meetings, the whip-around activity ensures every student gets a quick, low-stakes chance to speak and contribute, making every child feel seen and...
By exploring talk structures, our TK Mustangs are growing braver with language, especially our multilingual learners, and building real connections through conversation.
Always happy to share or welcome visitors at Weller to come and see it in action. It's pretty beautiful to see our youngest learners really starting to step up and share more in front of others. And it's an inclusive effort across campus. Our teachers have even developed ways for students who use AAC devices to capitalize on these talk structures, all the way to our sixth graders who are pretty much getting ready to take over lessons already at this point of the year. So, yeah. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the board or student board members? Any questions from Executive Cabinet Superintendent? Thank you for your presentation and the hard work that you guys always do. Thank you. Oh, Damon.
Hi, Dave. Sorry, it's not a question. Scott, do you mind putting the presentation back up? Just, I think, a way for you all to gloat a little bit more about you all doing it while it's cool.
He wants us to gloat more.
I was saying, Scott, can you hear me? Okay. Scott, if you could go back to the presentation, there is a slide where they have the data showing. And what I was saying is, it's not a question, but just a way in which you all can gloat a little bit more about the work that you're doing. So the grade level aspects, when we say that someone is below grade level, that means that they've missed a year, right? And so as we're moving up those strands, we're sometimes doubling the amount of time that it takes for students to learn information. So what I might suggest for the next time is you're showing how the, you're showing the decrease in those that were three or more grade levels below, but actually show how many people grew even more so that the board can see and others, all of the great work that you're doing.
I'm just going to piggyback on that, too. I appreciate you mentioning our neurodiverse students who use the AAC. I appreciate it always when I was there last year, and I think I've only been there once so far this year, but how you do integrate and have our neurodiverse students participate in the events and in the learning, whatever their communication modality is. And I know that we've talked about many of our students are duly identified, both as multilingual learners and neurodiverse learners. And I appreciate that you integrate that work into helping them to be successful as well. So thank you for including that aspect as well.
And last thing, I want to just go shout out for using those talk structures to allow the students to gain confidence, especially, especially our young ones. So I think that's a great way to get those kids to be open up and build that confidence that they can do it as well.
And just to build on what Assistant Soup James mentioned with your scores, by the end of the school year, you increased almost exactly 50% the numbers of students who are below, far below, or two or more below. So keep doing that.
Board President, Student Board Rep Gupta has something to say.
Okay, I'm really appreciative of the talk structures that you guys are implementing. I think it's really awesome to see these students collaborating and like advocating for themselves at such a young level. I think that's something that I wish I had in elementary school. So I'm really glad to see this being put in place.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, who's first? Business Services, Learning Development, or Community?
We are going to go first with our Chief Business Officer, Dorothy Rickenlose.
So tonight, my report tonight, I want to shift my focus, or our focus, to some of the work happening behind the scenes. In the maintenance department, we, the team has fixed emergency water break line MHS. They are building new bookstore for LNT in Building 700. They made significant repairs to rundle and CNO chillers, provided 60 step stools for TK used in the primary bathrooms. They replaced all metal nets in the middle schools with knitted nets for student safety. The team also resolved six site fire alarm communication issues to eliminate disruption in their instructional minutes. And in the kitchen, this month, they prepared newly freshly menu items that were cooked and packed at our central kitchen. These three items, it's called Chana Masala with lemon rice, Caprese sandwich, and vegan, I have to say this correctly, bolognese with rutini pasta. So these are the new menus that they freshly prepared at the central kitchen. So I want to just kind of highlight the work that they've done behind the scenes. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. I think pretty soon they're going to need to start catering. And then we will go to Executive Director, Mary Drew Droppinghouse.
Good evening. Scott, if you'll go ahead and pull up that slide for me, I'd appreciate that. So Scott's going to pull up a quick slide here that highlights some of the offerings that we in the Learning and Development Department are offering to staff across the district that supports inclusive practices district-wide. These are some screenshots of what we've offered, our offering in the next month or so. We have offerings across the entire school year, over 30 of them, targeted to support differing levels of needs. Everything from our classified staff, including our paraeducators, our transition assistants, our behavior intervention techs, focusing on various skills like supporting a positive classroom, behavior intervention plans, supporting accommodations in the classroom, and as well as de-escalation. We also have trainings for our educators, special educators, and general education teachers, both. We also differentiated those out for different levels. So there's different training for preschool, elementary, and secondary to meet the diverse needs of those students at school. And also for administrators as well, that is, on the topic of special education, supporting neurodiverse learners and supporting our staff with being able to meet those needs. The one thing I do want to highlight is our access for all. The one thing I do want to highlight is our Access For All, which is available to all staff every month, the first Thursday of the month, 3:30 to 4:30. We offer training on various aspects of supporting inclusive practices, everything from strategies for engagement to leveraging a prompting hierarchy, building independence, understanding antecedent behaviors, things of that nature. So really hope that those of you who are listening, who want to learn a little bit, tap into our department and see what we have to offer to help support your success with our students in the classroom. That concludes Learning and Development this evening.
Thank you. And Assistant Soup of Human Relations, Damon James.
So one of the things that we can do as a district to support staff in September is onboarding and professional development. And so I wanted to just highlight some of the things that we are doing as a district, our new educator orientation, so that includes the new certificated orientation at the beginning of the year. It includes induction. It includes things like the support that Brett Weber over there does at Mopitas High School with the new teachers there. It also includes our training that we offer to classified, the one week of initial training as they move into positions, as well as comprehensive mentoring. So the mentoring occurs in both certificated, classified, but also with managers in that coaches are available for targeted positions. And then the last is targeted training. And so Mary Jude mentioned the Access For All training that's available. And also, we work as a district to put together November 3rd professional development training, which includes certificated and classified. And so while the site principals are working together with district folk to collaborate, district folk are working with other district folk to look at supports that will enhance the district. And I also wanted to call out the picture that CBO Rekinoce shared, which was of the different food, and that food was targeted training where a chef came and helped teach them, if you remember from last year, supporting the SNS Central Kitchen staff with enhancing their skills. So it all kind of ties together with what we should be doing for staff in September. That concludes our report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, on the agenda, Student Board Representatives introductions and reports.
Okay, today, we're going to start with our middle, college, high school student board rep Gupta. Go right ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So to start off, we have been starting outreach at Mopitas High School for our spring application season. We had our first outreach tableing last week, and I'm proud to say that it's been going well. We almost ran out of brochures for our school last week, so it's been a success so far. And to add on to that, our applications for the spring semester, they open on October 1st, and they will close at the end of the month, on October 31st. Our school has the amazing opportunity to go on a field trip to Santa Clara University on October 17th. And our student government is working on a Halloween event, so stay tuned for that. And then, on the academic side, our students have started on college applications for our seniors with help from our counselors and also alumni that came to present about the EC application and also the transfer process. And then, in our cash rules, everything around me, AKA the job readiness class, we are learning more about the more challenging interview questions and how to advocate for a raise in the workforce. And then we're also conducting mock interviews. And then, that class also has the opportunity to attend the campus, the Job and Resource Fair at Innovation Campus on October 15th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Nia. We'll move right along to our Mopitas High School Student Board Rep Chung. Go right ahead.
This week is our homecoming week, but some things that already passed was we had our tailgate last Friday. It was for our Neon Night Football game, and Booster Club provided hot dogs, and we gave games like Spikeball and Cup Pong. We also have Powerpuff, which is women's flag football, and the next game is freshmen versus juniors during lunch. This week, for homecoming, this Friday is the homecoming football game and parade. A change was made this year to the parade so that instead of being mainly comprised of class floats, clubs are now also required to come and have five people represent their club. Furthermore, we have extended lunch, so after the rally, people can have more time at the Clog Food Sale. And this Saturday is the Homecoming Dance. Lastly, seniors are competing for the title of Homecoming Queen and King. Thank you.
And that concludes our student board reports.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, let's take a time, we will bypass the board group agreements, and we'll go to item 16, Board Communication Request, and we'll start with Trustee No.
Thank you, Board President Norwood. I attended the initial Time Capsule installment. I also attended my high school reunion, 25th year, so hearing our student board reps talk about the events there, when we all gather together. High school is such a special place that you learn, you grow, and you reminisce, and you create the stories and bonds that resonate even further down the road. Just wanted to share that tidbit, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee No. Dr. Makka.
Thank you, President Norwood. I did also attend the Time Capsule event, which I've never heard before, and that was a one-time, lifetime experience. And I'm looking forward to 25 years down the line, coming back in 2050, like Superintendent Cheryl Jordan shared with my girls and my family, to look forward to what is in store for the next generation. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Trustee Clerk Robert Chung.
Thank you. My top three included, I attended as part of the Community Roundtable with Supervisor Lee, The Impact of HR1. I also attended our Santa Clara School Boards Association Networking Event last Sunday, as well as enjoyed the Time Capsule, the initial release of a Time Capsule, or planting of a Time Capsule, let's do it that way, for 25 years from now. So that concludes my report.
Vice President Yip Chuan.
Thank you, President Norwood. I attended the Burnett and Mopitas High School School Site Council, attended the 25-year perpetual Time Capsule Ceremony, as well as the Santa Clara County School Board Association Networking Reception. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Yip Chuan. I have a couple of communication requests. When I attended the Rancho Back to School, I was approached by a couple of students, and they had shared with me that they would be very interested in invest in if it would be possible that if the ingredients for the school lunches to be posted daily. One of the comments that was made was that when they go to lunch, they're not sure, and some of them have allergies. And then, sometimes the food that is available, that they know doesn't affect their allergies, it runs out, and then they don't know what else they can choose from. So they would love to see when they go to, for the school lunch, that the ingredients that are being served that day are posted so they can make the right choices for their health. The other item is that I heard Assistant Chief Business Officer Rekinoce talk about what the team had did for TK in terms of the 60. So I am very interested, I think we're in our third year of TK? Is it our second or third year?
This is actually, I think, our fourth or fifth year of TK, but our first full implementation. Is that what you're asking?
Perfect. So I would love a study session on the TK, how that rollout has been, how it's going, and how we could continue to support, and what type of impacts that we're seeing from our students that have been in TK, for example. Because now that we have the students a year earlier, how is that helping support our English-language learners? How is that helping to support our students, our neurodiverse students? So I'm very interested in a TK study session. And then finally, and ask about the expansion of service learning to the elementary schools, supported by the local PTAs. We have a number of young people that are super excited about contributing, not only back to their school, but back to the community. So I would like to see how we can investigate, again, partnering with the PTAs, the expansion of service learning into our elementary schools throughout the district. And along with my colleagues, I did the Perpetual Time Capsule, as well as the Santa Clara County School Boards Association meeting over the weekend, and that concludes my report. Item 17, Action Item. Go ahead.
Oh, I just had a question about the PTA. It requires you to pay a fee to join, right?
Membership, yes.
Yeah. Wait, what about people who can't afford that? Like, parents who can't afford that but want to be involved?
That's a great question.
Okay.
That's why, that's why when I asked about the expansion of the service learning for the elementary school students, if there are parents that can't afford to participate in the PTA, that doesn't mean that would preclude their students from getting out of the service learning, because that might be one way for parents to say, "Well, I can't afford PTA" so that their kids can opt out of the service learning. But it's really about teaching our elementary school students, just like at the high school, you have the service learning commitments. Imagine if all of our students in the school district had some sort of service learning experience, even at our elementary school level. If they started at a young age, then it would be a part of who they are for the rest of their lives. But that's the spirit behind it, not to create a different scenario, but that's why I asked for us to investigate that. But that's a great question.
Yeah, and if I may, so some PTAs in their particular bylaws actually have a stipulation that if it cannot be afforded, there's ways to deal with that, meaning that it could be funded by other parents who wish to contribute on top of that. But we would have to check each of the bylaws for each of the PTAs.
That's awesome. Thank you.
That's why you're here. Great question. Appreciate it. And now on to item 17, Action Items, Business Services. 17A, Appointment of Volunteers to Serve as Members of the District Parcel Tax Oversight Committee.
We are recommending the appointment of volunteers to serve as member of the District Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. We have Baljit Jill, Bill Shuan, and Feng Nguyen.
And were there any other applicants?
No, we only have three applicants.
And do we have openings for all three?
We have two openings, two vacant position. We have one that would not like to continue, so that gave us three openings for the three volunteers.
Thank you.
Any questions by the board?
With the Parcel Tax Committee, there is a certain community makeup. Do we meet those, that requirement with these appointees?
I think there's only one component that we are missing. I believe it's the business partner.
Yep, it's the business taxpayers.
Business taxpayers or something. Two of our volunteers are parents and has experience in public education, and we have a very brand-new person interested in learning and engaging.
Thank you. I guess that does prompt the question, how do we address that particular need based on the categories that we are not fulfilling?
So we will continue to reach out, and when we have an opening, that we will continue to reach out and see if we get any applications and volunteer. And I believe our website always have, is accessible for anybody interested in filling out the application, and we're constantly monitoring if someone else is submitting an application.
Thank you. Scott, any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion for the appointment of the volunteers to serve as the members of the District Parcel Over, Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. Is there a second?
I may Chung second that.
I affirm the second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none?
Abstained.
We have one, thank you, Vice President Yip Chuan. We have one abstained. We have a motion second. I abstain. I haven't heard abstaining so long. My brain is gay. Okay. We said all favor, aye. Okay. No, motion carries.
There you go.
Thank you. Item, Appointment of Parcel Tax Oversight Committee Members for a Second Term.
We have two Parcel Tax Oversight Committee members where their terms are expiring in August of 2025. And Mr. Doug Sukha and Yan Wolf would like to continue serving as members of the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. So we're asking the board to approve their second term.
Scott, any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Stereo. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I affirm the second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion by the board?
Quick question on that. Were there any other applicants at all? Okay, thank you.
We have a motion, a second, additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item 17A, I approve Swinrich's Change Order Number 12 for the MHS Performing Arts Center Project.
I would like to call Travis Kirk as our CM to talk about the change order.
And CM is Construction Manager?
Construction Management.
Good evening. I'm happy to say I'm here for my second-to-last time for this project. Another batch of change orders. We had some unusual ones on this. One we haven't seen yet, which is related to tariffs. So we did have some metal panels that, at the time they were ordered, they were impacted by tariffs. We asked for the backup documentation to prove that fact, and they were able to provide that. So there is a change order for tariffs. It's the only one we've seen on the entire job, so that's fortunate. Another one is the category of demands of an outside agency, which is PG&E. So the PG&E work that we did did trigger some additional work on the side of the district, as well as the fire pump that we're having to put in over the theater stage that we spoke to before. That fire pump needed power all the way back from the main panel, so you'll see on there as well. All in all, we're trending well, all things considered, for a very specialized one-off building that's never been built before. We are at 7.08%, which is still less than, I think, every lease-leaseback project that we've done here and everyone that I've been involved in at Fremont High School District.
What school, what school district?
Somewhere on the other side of town, Fremont High School District. So we are here with this batch of change orders. I'm happy to answer any questions specific to any of those. I will say we've had a lot of success, my team and I, on pushing back. You'll see the numbers jump. When you see it goes from X number, you skip a couple of numbers. These are ones that a lot of times we're pushing back on, and we get negated, zero out, or we disagree with them, and prove to the contractor they're not valid. There's one in particular that came up recently. But typically, when their change order occurs, there's a question. The question gets asked, the architect answers the question. And if that question, the answer to that question is something that's not represented in the plans, that typically would turn into a change order. that typically would turn into a change order. We had an instance recently where they give us a flat rate price, which is typically how you start. And they had listed two hundred and seventy-seven man-hours to perform this particular scope of work, which I felt was ridiculous. And so we have the ability to say, no, you have to do that on time and material and track your time. We just got the tags. They hovered around forty hours for that work. We saved two hundred and thirty-seven hours of labor. We saved truck rental, lift rental, tool rentals, all those sorts of things. So that is one mechanism that we can use, and we use very effectively and very often to protect the financial interests of the district. So that's, that's a big win on that one.
Thank you, Scott. Is there any public comment?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve the Swinrich and Change Order number twelve for the Mel Peters High School Performing Arts Center, which Travis says will be the second to last time that we will see him. Is there a second?
See you in February.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just, are we still on track for, I think, the fall?
Yes, sir. We're on track for January.
January.
Yep, January. So we did do one time extension. We had some dialogue with the contractor. PG&E kept pushing out. You know, when PG&E is going to do something for you, it's when they show up, you know. And so we were out there on Sunday, getting this work done and getting it powered back up. I got to see Juliana out there taking her walk. The PG&E guys did a great job. The MEI guys, the electricians, they did a great job, because one, one team had to pull a bunch of stuff out of the ground, and PG&E had to set a vault, and then they did all this real intricate wiring and so forth. And so we were out there to monitor that. The contractor kind of hinted like, well, maybe that put us behind. We might need more time. I said, absolutely not. You guys are one of the best contractors in the country, and I'm sure that you can staff this up, and I'm confident that we'll still cut a ribbon in January as promised. And they said, absolutely. That's where we are. They've been actually pretty well to work with.
Are we expecting the students to be able to move into that building by second semester or next year?
Probably January, during second semester.
I'd probably defer to that decision to the chief innovator over there with the team to determine that as well. And I would probably add to that discussion that, you know, this, this state-of-the-art building will most likely be the performing arts center or theater for the city of Mel Peters. And that as, as costs continue to increase for a number of things that we want, I look forward to the plan that the high school comes up with the district in terms of how it will generate revenue for the school district, and particularly our secondary students at Mel Peters High School and throughout the, the school district. Because again, it is a world-class theater comparable to a number of performing arts theaters that they have in other cities. So I'm definitely looking forward to what that plan is going to look like, so that we can generate revenue and recoup some of the additional costs, even though you are below, as you stated, your change order request. But we, we still want to, again, maximize that opportunity and make sure it's a revenue generation, plus a facility that will just continue to build the reputation of the Mel Peters Unified School District and the city of Mel Peters for many years to come.
Quick question. You mentioned tariffs. Can you tell me, give me a ballpark of, I didn't see the number for the tariffs.
It's just a few thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't a huge one. I just thought it was worth pointing out.
Okay.
It's the first time we got hit with that.
Right, fair enough. I was just curious, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I would follow up and say that the scaffolding is coming down. They work their way from the top, and they have to finish everything, come down, 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 down. So the first part of November, we will send out our invitation for you all to come and visit. And I think you're just going to be so pleased with what this thing looks like inside. It really is something to be proud of.
Awesome. Thank you for all your hard work. And respecting the, the way that the board has approached each time that you come, being very thoughtful, because we know that there's more work to be done, there's more projects. And you, you continue to lead the way in supporting the vision that we have for MUSD. So thank you very much, Travis, for that work.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just one more comment.
Absolutely.
On behalf of the students, they would like to make a request for the students to be able to be the first participant in that theater and not let any other organizations utilize it first.
I'm, I'm not. Okay. Okay, so I would say that I am going to again refer to the chief innovator and the superintendent on that, as, as we look at the taxpayers who allow the students to go to school at that location and fund a lot of things that happen in the district, it is a mutually beneficial opportunity.
We have Lunar Show and VSA Show and Poo Show.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Thank you, Travis. Item seventeen B, learning and development, conduct a public hearing and adopt the board resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six dot nine Williams compliance. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Open the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item three, BII, adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
I second that.
I affirm the second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Any additional comments? All those, we did that already.
Yeah, we did that already.
All right.
No, we didn't take a vote yet.
Okay, we did. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We didn't.
Any abstained? Any additional discussion? Seeing none? Motion carries. Human Relations, adopt resolution twenty twenty-six dot seven, provision intern permit for educational specialists mild, moderate at Mel Peters High School.
Assistant Superintendent James.
So this resolution allows for our SLP, who per ed code is allowed to teach or to be a speech and language pathologist, but we need a provisional internship permit so that she has the credential essentially to be in the classroom. So that's what this resolution is. If you look at the supporting document that says our shot ed code summary, it actually shows the ed code. And because she does have the master's in communication, that's why she's able to be in the classroom or enabled to be a speech and language pathologist. And again, the provisional internship permit is a permit that gives jurisdiction. And it also states that she will go to school to get the additional schooling needed. And there's a timeline for completion. So that's the resolution and the connection to the ed code.
Thank you. Scott, are there any public comments?
No public comments at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
Just a quick question. This is the first time this individual has requested the, the intern permit.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item B, item DII, adopt resolution twenty twenty-six dot eight, honoring the two thousand five hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the birth of Confucius.
Thank you. And before we get started, I would like to remind the board that we are invited on Sunday at ten AM to attend the Taipei Economic Development Celebration of the Confucius Ceremony.
Perfect.
For this particular resolution, we engaged Ms. Tao's AP Chinese Language Class.
Resolution twenty twenty-six point A, honoring the two thousand five hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the birth of Confucius. Whereas September twenty eighth, five hundred fifty-one B.C., is recognized as the day of which Confucius was born in the town of Chufu in what is now Shandong Province of China. Whereas Confucius, as one of the greatest thinkers, teachers, and social philosophers in history, developed a philosophy that has deeply influenced and continues to influence the social and political thought of countries around the world. And whereas Confucius is respected as the first teacher of Chinese society, having influenced countless individuals in their respective ideologies and
Confucius played the seed of peaceful intellectual and social evolution in the mind and heart of the Chinese people, constantly advocating for, of inform and educate society.
Whereas the teaching of Confucius that what one does not wish for oneself, one ought not to do to anyone else. What one recognizes as desirable for oneself, one ought to be willing to grant to others, is a model for ethical behavior and for the promotion of harmony among people and
Confucius taught that an ideal government is founded upon loyalty, respect for elders, and recognition of the importance of family and
Whereas the Committee for the Confucius Memorial Ceremony represents Shandong Association, the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in San Francisco, Association of the Northern California Chinese Schools, and the Cultural Center of Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in San Francisco, Mel Peters, and
Whereas the Confucius Memorial Ceremony observed its forty-fourth anniversary this year, taking place at the Cultural Center of Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in San Francisco, Mel Peters, on September twenty eighth, and
Now, therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the Mel Peters Unified School District honors the two thousand five hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the birth of Confucius and recognizes his invaluable contributions to philosophy and social and political thought.
Passed and adopted by the Mel Peters Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five by the following vote.
Scott, any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
We, oh, sorry.
No, no, no.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll confirm, affirm.
Affirm.
Second.
I affirm the second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. Video very well done, and I do recommend that we send that over to Peggy from, right, so that they actually see the resolution that we passed.
Will do. First thing tomorrow morning.
Awesome. Thank you. Consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There's no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board staff or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Are there any items to be pulled for discussion or correction? To be tabled or removed for discussion or correction?
President Norwood, I would like to pull item A, eighteen A four, approve Atlantic sound for installation of new sound system at Mel Peters High School. And we are pulling that item tonight and bringing it back to you at the next board meeting.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to, gotta come up, gotta do the whole thing. Motion to accept.
Oh, motion to accept all the consent items minus A four. A four, thank you.
Is it A four?
Yes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. Consent item is adopted minus A four, the equipment for the high school. Glad to see that that is moving forward in terms of the sound system and that it, it will be corrected and we'll, we will see it most likely in the, in the spring installed, or is that going to be the next school year? Thank you.
Plan is in spring.
Awesome. Days of future board meetings, October fourteenth, tentative. Study session five PM, tentative closed session six PM, open session seven PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, round the world languages school. October twenty-eighth, tentative study session five PM, tentative closed session six PM, open session seven PM. Any additional announcements or reminders?
President Norwood, I have a couple that I've been asked to remind folks. There is this Saturday, Mel Peters Cares. There's a rally going on Saturday morning at a New Vision Church. Thank you. I remember. And second, there is the Santa Clara School Boards Association Lunch and Learn tomorrow at noon, and I will be presenting the topic for our unhoused students.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
We have the back-to-school night for Calaveras Hills High School coming up.
Back-to-school night for Calaveras Hills?
On Thursday.
On Thursday. Any other announcements?
Yes, we have a special board superintendent meeting on Tuesday the thirtieth, beginning at three for certain, possibly at two. And Assistant Superintendent James, you wanted to provide further information about Love Mel Peters kickoff on Saturday. I think you said, I think I already just said it starts at eight.
Yes, it starts at eight. Robert mentioned the church. That's correct.
Yep. I believe the, the Chamber of Commerce has their awards banquet this Friday. The Class of Ninety-Five, I believe, has their, Mel Peters High School Class of Ninety-Five has their reunion this weekend. And there's also a number of those folks that are coming in for the Class of Ninety-Five that are going to get a tour of the high school. And the innovation camp is supported by Board President and Superintendent Jordan. And then, of course, this weekend, as the student board rep has mentioned, is this Friday is the homecoming game, right? And then tomorrow, Superintendent Jordan mentioned it earlier, the twenty twenty-five Shades of Success from the Black Excellence Committee.
And on Sunday, our principal and chief innovator of Mel Peters High School School Campuses, Mr. Greg Wolman, will be featured at the first Mel Peters TED Talk.
TEDx.
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 Yeah, Mel Peters TEDx, yep.
And then further down the road, but planning ahead, October twenty-second will be the district's Unity Day, again, to celebrate acceptance, kindness, and inclusion.
Thank you.
So prepare to wear your orange on October twenty-second.
We're preparing to wear orange on October twenty-second. There are motion to adjourn.
Let's go adjourn.
Yeah, you get who that was, Scott?
Men, men and then a new.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.